I call the April 26, 2023 Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners meeting to order pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, a good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I do want to remind everybody this is a public meeting and is being recorded. It's also available online, and it looks like we do have some visitors online, so I just want to remind that all comments and discussions are public record, so thank you for that. How about awards, recognitions, and correspondence? Cindy?
Okay. We would like to recognize today, it's National Administrative Assistance Day, and we just gave Lori flowers earlier, made her cry, and so we are very pleased and honored, whatever adjective you want to use, lucky to have Lori, and so we truly appreciate everything she does for us, so. And I'm sure that other people in other departments are doing the same thing today.
Lucky is an understatement.
Yeah. So, thank you, Lori.
I cannot say thank you enough for what you've done for our office and how you've been able to communicate with the other departments and the public itself. It's not an easy job. It has got stress every day, and you've done it very, very professionally, so thank you.
Thank you.
And she has to crowl us, which is an easy task.
Yeah, because we can't even do that. So, thank you very much, Lori.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody that I am the one who selected her. I'd like to entertain a motion to address the minutes of previous meetings, March 29, 2023, and April 5, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes of March 29, 2023, and April 5, 2023.
There have been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Additions to the agenda. We will move number 17 up to number two.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Number three.
Number?
Because there are people there for number two as well.
Okay. So, number 17 will be moved up to number 13 unless there's an objection.
Three.
Three. Unless there's an objection. Okay. At this time, any public comment, we'd like to limit public comment to three minutes, and all public comment is addressed to any item that is not on the agenda today. When you do come up to the podium, please state your name and address and direct all your comments to the dais. Thank you. Now, I'm going to call for any public comments for anything not on the agenda. Not seeing any, we'll move into the business items for today. The first item on the agenda is the Soil and Water Control District, and Mr. Kyle Wagner's here. You've still got to state your name.
Good morning. Kyle Wagner, Yumitilla County Soil and Water Conservation District, 1 Southwest Night Avenue, Suite 130 in Pendleton, Oregon. With me is Tom Strawn, one of our board members, our secretary treasurer. Thank you for listening to me today to consider a proposal for flood coordinator services. I submitted a PowerPoint, just briefly go over a couple things. I know the commissioners have seen a lot of this before and are familiar with the proposal, but just for the sake of the audience and for the meeting, wanted to cover this. But just as a brief background in history, the Soil and Water Conservation District proposed flood coordinator services to the county commissioners for the entire Yumitilla County last year. In that proposal, we proposed to become the single point of contact for all flooding projects in the county. We worked on trying to develop a systematic approach, trying to take all the successes from all the different flood groups and flood initiatives, try to combine them into a single effort. We provided media onsite documentation of active events, facilitated and helped lead flood groups that were starting or already existing. We also looked at stepping into coordinating new groups, act as a consultant, providing technical assistance for grants by our drone services, providing landowners in cities with the data needed for permits. And then we also stepped into the role of being an active point of contact for all landowners that had permitting questions in the county. So, with that proposal, in the fiscal year of 2022, 2023, we assisted 55 unique landowners, either called our office, or we had site visits. We documented six active events with our drone or just basic photo gathering. We led or assisted six different flooding groups. We worked on or helped submit 11 different grants or technical assistance projects. We held one permitting workshop down in Echo for landowners to come and hear directly from the permitting agencies to help fill out the permit. And then we're about 50% funded and 20% complete on that guidebook, which is kind of the culmination of a systematic approach for Yumitilla County and trying to get through the permitting process. In those numbers, we budgeted roughly, or the previous contract was for $16,515, which was roughly for 240 hours of the Soil and Water Conservation District's time, or 20 hours a month, and about five drone flights. And in this last fiscal year, as of 3/13/23, the district had provided 384 hours working on flooding initiatives in the county and performed 17 drone flights all over for Echo and individual landowners. In the work we provided, whether it was directly, we applied for grants or projects, or through our assistance to cities or some of the flooding groups or water control districts, we secured $2,894,000 from this $16,000 contract that the county provided, and there's $840,000 still pending in projects that we helped apply for. So, we're really proud with that accomplishment, what we're able to bring in. And looking ahead, there's a lot more work to do with flooding projects and challenges in the county. We'd like to see that bank stabilization guidebook brought to completion, finish our Zone 2 and Echo levy projects through the businesses of Oregon, finish the Mackay Creek restoration and basin study projects, which are currently ongoing, and then we're just starting work now helping Helix and Walla Walla with Greasewood and the Walla Walla Control District prospectively. And in the future, Weston, Pilot Rock, and Ukiah all have the same issues all these little cities and towns are facing, which is a river that goes to the town, and there's, you know, constant flooding risk and work that needs to be done. So, for next fiscal year, the board is proposing to, the same contract, continuing to tackle these objectives that I enumerated, for a $20,000-year contract with the drone build on a project-by-project basis. Our justification for this is last year with our contract of 16,000, it was budgeted for 200 hours, and we spent 384. So, this $20,000 a year just matches one-for-one what we spent last year, which we expect to spend the same, if not more, this year. And that's the contract that has been before you, and just would like to thank the commissioners for considering this, and thank you again for the opportunity for the Soil and Water Conservation District to more effectively serve all the constituents of Yumitilla County.
One thing that you left out again is Kyle orchestrated two town hall meetings that were incredibly, probably worth the 16,000 all alone. Brought together agencies, Bob was involved, but brought together agencies, every agency that needed to be in the room along with his constituents, and then the landowners and municipalities that have these issues. One thing about Yumitilla County, we built a lot of our cities on rivers, whether it's Camus Creek, Yumitilla, or Mackay, South Fork, Walla Walla, Greasewood, it doesn't matter. All of our, a lot of our 12 towns are built on creeks and rivers that definitely have issues and are being addressed at a different time and a different place in society now. Back when we used to armor banks and have high-speed water, which was very effective for the last 120 years, there's a lot of social and physical and constituent demand to look at different solutions to our flooding issues. And Kyle, those two town halls were as productive as any town halls that I've ever attended, so thank you for those. Those were huge. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah. I'm glad that you brought one of your board members here, Mr. Strawn. I can't tell you how much of an asset he is, and I realize I'm probably preaching to the choir, but he, you know, every water meeting I go to, the first comment I hear is, wow, Kyle Wagner is fantastic. He's been such a huge blessing to this county, and I can't thank you enough for the work you've done. I think $20,000 is the bargain. With that, I would, you know, I realize she's probably going to make some comments too, but with that, I would love to make the motion that we accept the proposal and authorize contract with SWCD for continued coordinated rural services in the amount of $20,000.
And I would just echo what these gentlemen said. Anytime I've seen you in a public meeting, I mean, you've brought people together that they're in the talk, and you've brought them in a room together, and by the time they leave, there's a plan. And I would, just not more than once, and I've only been here a very short time, so you're doing a fantastic job. A second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your work. Next item on the agenda is the outdoor mass gathering.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Dogchesky from the Planning Division. This request before you is regarding a permit that the Planning Division has received for the Camus Prairie Cowboy Convention. They are requesting a two-day event, June 23 and 24, 2023, within Ukiah, and the expected attendance is 600 people a day. Because this is a mass gathering permit, it does require the board to approve of it. And I believe the applicants are here if they wanted to provide more information regarding the event.
I would love to hear it if they would make any comment.
I'll go with that question.
Okay.
I have one question. Well, it's actually more for your wife. It's for Karen, actually. I would like her to stand up and show us her sweatshirt.
Karen Parker, 45762 Tudwell Church Road, Pendleton, Oregon. I'm on the board for the Ukiah rodeo. My grandfather started it in 1921, and we brought it back. Carl Jensen's our president. But we did have 600 people the first day. The second day, there was close to 1,200, and we are expecting so many more this year. We're also having, I grew up in Ukiah and graduated from there, but we're also having the 100th class reunion and the same weekend, so we're anticipating a lot more people with that. And we would appreciate anything that you can do, and we appreciate you guys so much and all that already has been done through here. So, thank you.
Thanks for all you guys.
Turn around, I want to see the sweatshirt.
There's three different kinds. We've sold a lot, and hats are available, too.
So, where can I get one of those sweatshirts?
I'll get you one. And Amy. Amy will be first.
Of course, as you should be.
Yeah. I'll talk to you later.
Wishes of the board.
I move to approve a permit for outdoor mass gathering for the Camus Prairie Cowboy Convention.
I happily second that.
Thank you.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to visit us.
Thank you.
The next item is, we're going, as mentioned earlier, we're going to skip and move down to item number 17, a proclamation to declare May 2023 National Historic Preservation Month. Would you like to speak to that, Cindy, here?
I think we have somebody online.
Oh, let me see, online. Hi, Trish, thank you. Yeah, please name and address.
Right. I'm Trish Neal, 3237 East Tudor Road, Number 4, in Anchorage, Alaska. I thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me time to visit with you. I'm with the Weston Area Development Association in Weston, Oregon. We were organized a year ago as a nonprofit to encourage restoration and revitalization in the downtown area. That will result in economic development and a positive sense of community. And I sent the proclamation to Commissioner Timmons with the hope that you would adopt the proclamation for Historic Preservation Month during May. This is an event that is near and dear to my heart. I've been involved with historic preservation since the early 80s, and we are in the process of writing grants to start restoring and repairing the commercial historic district downtown Weston, and so this goes in with that. Our website is westonorgan.com, and you'll find all the events that we've got planned for May on that website. So, again, I thank you for the time to visit with you, and I will be seeing more of you.
Thank you very much, Trish. Comments or questions?
Looks like there might be some others that have their hand up.
I can't see the other hand. Anyone else online that would like to speak to this?
Is he there?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Trish. So, the proclamation, the last therefore is the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners orders and plans May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month and encourages all citizens of Yumitilla County to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance and activities that are happening in our county during the month of May. So, wishes of the commission.
I think this is a wonderful proclamation, and I know of several projects across the county. This is exactly what they're doing, is they're preserving historical buildings, and so I move.
Move. Move to approve.
I move to approve. I move to approve a proclamation to declare May 2023 National Historic Preservation Month for Yumitilla County.
Do we need to adopt the board order?
Okay.
BCC.
Adopt board order number BCC 2023-020.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Since September of 1862, that's pretty good history for this county.
Boy.
Good news is, we're not Wasco County anymore. Next item on the agenda, we'll go back to the agenda as presented, and number three is the Aware Grants.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Community Development Director, and I also serve as, I guess, President of the Aware Committee. The Aware Committee met back on April 7 to review our grant requests that we received for this year. I will note, we had a smaller dollar amount to work with this year, just because the project payments from the windmill projects in the Athena Weston area are decreasing. And so, over the next few years, we'll only have about $75,000 to work with. But we were able to grant funding to 11 different projects in the amount of $74,500, and this will go to a variety of projects for various community buildings and projects that support both Athena and Weston communities. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those hopefully.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions for Bob?
No, I will say, I'm also on that committee, and the committee did a really good job of picking the projects that, I mean, it was a tough decision to have, to be had, and I think the committee did a very good job of doing that.
I might add on to that, Commissioner, if you don't mind. One of the things we do plan for next year is, in the solicitation for the grants, is to make the applicants aware that there is less money to work with, and the committee does wish to fund, you know, as many requests as possible, but we may not be able to do that, to fund large requests. So, we'll just ask the applicants to keep that in mind next year as they apply.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, did you have people apply that didn't receive funding?
The only projects, there were, the school district submitted three different projects, and Superintendent Vecchio attends the meetings, and so we asked her to pick the project that was, I guess, to prioritize those projects. And so, her recommendation was the Pickleball Court renovation has probably one of the highest uses there because it's at the middle school, and she prioritized it above the other projects. There was an additional project, I believe, that she was going, thinking she could be able to get Wild Horse funding for that, so she was going to make an application for that and possibly a community development grant for the next cycle. So, I shared that information with her. So, there were two school district projects that we weren't able to fund.
Mr. Chair, I move with adoption of order BCC 2023-018.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Grants, which is back to Bob.
Yep. So, as Community Development Director, I help staff the Economic Development Grant Program, Community and Economic Development Grant Program, and these funds are derived from lottery dollars that the county receives, and those have to be used towards economic development. And so, it's been a goal of the commissioners to get these dollars back into our communities through the form of various community projects that have a lasting benefit in the community. So, we want to see something that's tangible, lasting, and really positively impacts as many community members as possible. And so, we revamped the grant program this year after a small period where we put it on pause during COVID. And so, we revamped the program, appointed a new committee that's made up of various city councilors from across Yumitilla County that represent communities of various size and geographic distribution. And we had four grant requests this year, or for this spring cycle, and they chose to fund three of the projects in the amount of $44,815, I believe. There was one project that they chose not to fund, and that was because it was a sponsorship for a community event, and the intent of these dollars, like I said, is for something tangible and long-lasting into the future. So, seeking your approval today for these three grants. What we will be doing is, there is a fall cycle that closes the first Friday in October, and so we hope to spread the word about this grant opportunity to more of our community groups and really get more interest. I think the next round will probably be a little more difficult decision when it comes to funding, because we'll have more applicants, but...
The first thing I want to say about this is, I thought that putting together the participants from city council was a great, great initiative. The discussions that happened that evening were great discussions, and the questions, not just on the projects but on the program, I thought were just spot on, and it was very evident that each of the members took it very seriously. So, I congratulate Bob for putting that program back together. The forms seem to be very intuitive, and so they were all happy with the new forms. I was really happy that everybody, that as a group, that they're, not they're put down, but that made the clear decision that events were part of this program. So, it was nice to have an event submitted for the first one, so that that definition became clear. And so, I look forward to the additional requests that come in, and I think that the diversity and variety of programs just really benefits the county. Thanks again for the program, the meeting, and the group that you put together. Other comments?
I'm getting a lot of positive feedback on the program, and people are glad to have it back. Well done.
Entertaining a motion? Oh, that's right.
I move to approve funding recommendations for Spring 2023 Community and Economic Development Grant Request.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Property auction.
This item before the board is a request to schedule the annual share of sale auction for properties that the county acquired for doing the property taxes. The tentative date for that is May 23. There were a number of properties left over from last year that are also on this foreclosure list, and those now have a reduced recommended value or minimum bid price, and then along with the properties that were acquired in 2023 are also on the list.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of order TX 2023-02.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Elections Payable, and Mr. Lenai is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Lenai, Director of Administrative Services, and before you is a payable to Rider Electronic Services. They do the printing for our ballots, and it's the printing of our May ballots, $20,368.96. And it's a, it's a planned and budgeted item that we do every, at least two times a year, maybe sometimes more, but it's above $5,000, so it needs board approval for it.
If they all don't come back, filled out.
Yeah.
How many items are on this ballot?
Oh, I couldn't tell you, because this is all the special districts, so I have like 190 different ballot styles or something, so, which means if the 16-year-olds get the vote in the school board elections, I'm going to even have more ballot styles and stuff, so it's crazy.
It is crazy. I'll put that on record. Thanks, Dan. Entertaining a motion?
Move approval.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Trish, there's a question.
Good morning. Jim Littlefield, Under Sheriff for Yumitilla County. This request before us is to award a contract for the purchase of a cargo trailer in October, November-ish, 2022. The county received a couple of Homeland Security Grants. One was for the purchase of a utility trailer enclosed, helped us with transporting items for some of the... We went out for an RFP and had two bids returned to us. One from American Trailer Sales in Hermiston, the other from Verde Incorporated. I think they're based in Florida, but they have a dealership in Independence, Oregon. The, the bid from American Trailer Sales in Hermiston was the lower bid, actually lower than the amount of the grant. So we would request to go with that purchase.
Thanks, Jim. Any comments? Motion?
I'm just glad that it's a local company doing it. So this chair, I move approval to, for the purchase of a cargo trailer from American Trailer in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you, guys.
The next is approval for the sheriff's office to employ PERS retiring. Don't go away, Jim.
We have a person in our staff that is requesting post-PERS retirement. They've been with the county for, while they've been in their career for over thirty years. Captain Karen Primmer is eligible and is requesting that she is allowed to retire from PERS and then work back per county policy.
I refuse to make that motion.
The one, the one thing that I do want to add is that, and we've had this discussion, is there is legislation this year to modify that program, and it's, it hasn't died. You could eliminate it eventually. It depends on, or it could extend it to thirty-five. So it's, it's a contentious piece of legislation down in Salem right now, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware that there's possible changes coming. So anyway, wishes of the, of the commission.
Yeah, I move to approve hiring of the PERS retiring as temporary special employee.
Regurgently second that. Just because I've worked with her so long and I know how she feels.
Yeah, she, she does quite a job.
We don't anticipate that she's going to leave anytime soon, so we're comforted in that.
That's, that's the only saving grace.
There's a motion before us and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Hold it. CHL card printer.
Probably kept.
I just want to say.
Sheriff's gonna do it. Okay. Sorry. Next item on the agenda is the CHL card printer.
But if you want to, sorry, try not to. Good morning.
Do I skip one?
No.
I think Karen Primmer had something to say.
Oh, she, oh.
Did you hear her hand up?
I just heard her talking through.
Oh, Karen, are you still there?
She may have bounced. It says she's left reading.
Oh, okay.
I didn't see her hand up.
I'll give her a hug back at the office.
Tell her to put her hand up next time.
Right. I'm Sturin Ward, Captain with Umatilla County Sheriff's Office, forty-seven-hundred Northwest Pioneer Place, Pendleton. So I'm seeking approval today for purchase of a concealed handgun license card printer for the amount of, as far as a quote that we've got is five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents. This has been a purchase that has been forecasted for the last couple of years in my budget. We just had some technical issues that is forcing the purchase now, so we're looking for approval to purchase. It is a statutorily mandated program under ORS one-sixty-six two-ninety-one.
Mr. Chair, move approval on purchase of a new CHL card reader printer in the amount of five thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before you. Um, is this getting a lot of use right now?
Yeah, yeah, we do this all day long. So, yeah. It's a daily event.
Okay. Has it been a daily event for a long period of time, or?
Since CHLs.
A little bit?
So, oh, as far as how many CHLs we are getting? So no, they've actually kind of tapered off just a little bit, believe it or not. But we have over eight thousand that we have currently issued out. So it's a renewal process of every four years. So we have a large percentage, and it just keeps going. So we have appointments Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but my staff works on them Wednesday. That's all. We just don't take appointments. But it is a, it is a daily event for my office. Yeah. Yes.
Make our printer make our pictures look a little bit better.
Photoshop for an extra fee. I'm kidding.
I'm not super, I'm not actually kidding.
Cindy, did you say?
Second, yeah.
There's a second. I had, the one question I have, Captain, is the warranty, the four-year warranty. I'm glad that you guys picked that up.
That's actually advice by Riley, the IT. I try and listen to people. They're smarter than me. So.
Perfect. But my question is, do they, Riley on that, will they service it? How do they service a warranty?
So the way, the way it's working in class, we have to send it into a qualified service tech, and then they repair things on everything like that.
Is there one local, or does it send it in, get it back?
On this device, I'm not sure where the, the nearest one is. Usually we just follow through with the warranty process, and they tell us where to send it and give us the shipping sticker and all that sort of stuff for it.
Is the old, is the old one getting to hang around and?
The old one has been here as long as I have.
Yeah, since twenty-fourteen is when it was purchased, so it's been a while. So it's a high-dollar purchase, but it lasts for a long time, hoping. We're hoping this one goes well.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this morning is the Community Corrections Purchase. I don't see anyone on the line.
So this one is, much like the sheriff's office, the approbation officers will go out in the field from time to time, and their vests of all are expiring every five years. So they are wanted to replace, forget how many exactly. A number of vests and in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars seventy-six cents. I believe it's the same place that they get, that the sheriff's office gets theirs from.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Looks like seventeen.
Seventeen of them.
Did you make a motion?
Oh, I will make a motion to approve the purchase.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Commissioner Shaver, on that. Looks like you're still up. Community Corrections Storage.
So Community Corrections is working with our maintenance department and renovating a new VFW in Hermiston for a future office space. And due to the ongoing work, we're in need of purchasing file organization system for that office. And this will be Space Saber Specialist Files towards the Hermiston office in the amount of six thousand and seven, six thousand seventy-eight dollars and zero cents. With that, I move for approval.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval payable to drywall said building.
Morning, Commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. You are correct. This is for the drywall for that new facility in the amount of five thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy cents.
And that's reimbursed.
Yeah, that's being reimbursed by Community Corrections.
With that, I move approval.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is Public Works Purchase. Good morning, Mr. Fellows. In person.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. I heard that. So what the Public Works is bringing before the board today, we've been, I've been in communication with a company by the name of Midwest Industries. I met them last year at the County Engineers Conference in Buffalo, New York, and started talking with them about some possibilities of using a product like theirs on some of our roads. After that, I was at the NACO conference in Denver and had the opportunity to look at a few roads that Adams County down there uses these products on and kind of liked what I saw. So we started, started working with Midwest to put together a pilot project for Umatilla County. We picked a couple of roads at random, but they're roads that we know will be very representative of what we're looking for as a test project. One of them is, is extremely rural. It's a heavily-used farm market road, a lot of truck traffic. And the other one is residential, a little more car traffic use. We tend to get dust complaints and things off from, off from that road. So long story short, we're, this, we're at the point where we either have to move forward or, or not, not pursue this. I would like to pursue this in an effort to see if there's a way that we can provide some little better level of maintenance between gravel and asphalt that, for the county. This, I don't see this being a one-size-fits-all throughout the whole county. But I think that especially when we start talking about residential areas or heavily-used truck traffic areas on, on gravel roads, I think it, it may be, may be something that will help our maintenance out considerably. So what we're requesting is the purchase of the product for these two roads, the sagebrush and the south end of Moore House where it turns to Wells Station Road there. And we're going to do a mile stretch on both of these roads.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I think it's been great that Tom's actually made sure that I stayed involved and kept me in the loop on this. He brought in some, actually what I would consider experts on this product. This product had, I mean, we can talk about the product all day. It's an, it's an on-but-timidance-based product. It is biodegradable, bio, it's not biodegradable, but it is bio. And it has as, as much adhesion as it should still. Anyway, I, I think this is a pilot project that the whole state will be watching us. And I think that it has all the markings of success. I know that they tweaked the program a little bit to make sure that we afforded out of our budget and moved forward with this. I hope it's a success because it gives us an avenue, a viable financial avenue to address a lot of the things like conflict, but especially to our particulates in the air. So we get hammered on carbon and other environmental issues. Particulates are crawling up that list extremely fast. And it's going to be, it's, we're going to address it if we can get ahead of it with at least the knowledge and the expertise to lay down this product, and you're miles and miles ahead.
Did you want to make the motion now?
I would love to make a motion on this one.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is it, Tom, what does it do? What does it look like, or?
It, it's, it's a liquid product. It's actually, you use water as a dilution, and, and it'll, it'll be diluted and then applied to the road. It's a, it's essentially a polymer, which means that, that once it, it, once it cures, it's, it's hard. It's kind of like a resin, you know, in that manner. It, so really, it brings a, almost a floor-like surface to the road. The road, the road will look rather shiny and slick, not quite, but because you're talking about an aggregate base, you still have skid resistance and, and, you know, it's, it's not like it's going to be a terrible slick road when it rains. So, yeah, and it's just applied through a distributor similar to our, our asphalt distributors.
Okay. So it's, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
It's not something you spray on the top?
No, we, we actually, well, there's, there's a number of different processes. Because we're using this as a pilot program, we'll actually scarfire the surface, we'll, we'll rough it up, we'll fluff up the top couple inches of it so that you get good penetration of, of the product in, into the road surface. And then you come back and you roll it so that, so you get that compacted depth, and it brings a little more uniformity to the road. I don't know if that answers.
It does. So how long is it expected to last before you?
Well, there are, our Adams County in, in Colorado, which is the, around the Denver area, with a similar product, they've been seeing five to seven years before, with, with little or no maintenance. I don't know, that, that's why, that's why we're doing the pilot. I, you know, I'm hoping three to five years. That part of this program is every year you have to come reapply a very light coat. I mean, it's, it's nothing, it's not even ten percent, ten to twelve percent of what we're actually putting on the application now. But it, it requires an annual maintenance application of the product. And, and I'm in hopes that we can see five years plus out of it. But that's why you do a pilot, so that you can see what you're going to get.
I think it's kind of exciting.
I do, yeah. This is at least the second pilot project you've been involved in in the last twelve months, according to. And there's no, there's, I mean, it's obvious to me why at AOC, the Association of Orange Counties, if you hear public workers throw in maintenance, the next thing you hear is Tom Fellows. So I mean, it's, it's truly no wonder to me that we hear that all the time. And even, and you represent AOC in Nashville as well. So, and it's, it's obvious to me why.
I think the hardest thing is going to be explaining all the pink roads. I think that would be the toughest thing. I would like to make the motion to approve this pilot program and the funding for Tom and his group to proceed with this. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item on the agenda is the Echo Community Benefit Grants. I guess I can talk to that. We met a couple of weeks ago. Several programs were brought in front of us, had a great discussion. It's probably one of the most active community groups that I'm, that I'm involved in. And we have, one, two, three, four, five, nine people there. And so.
Wish for an echo. That's a lot. That's a high percentage.
That, that's a high percentage, and the meeting lasted a while.
Wow.
So, and they didn't bring buildings. But the, the recommendations are in the, in your packet, and they too, as the other programs are, have a diminishing funding capability. But what was really kind of neat is they also are working with Robert to return any of their unused funding from the previous grants. If there was a ten thousand grant, they only spent seven. They're working with Robert on how to return that to the pool. So it's kind of, kind of neat. That's the first group that I've heard that, too. So, Robert, anything to add?
No.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the Echo Community Benefit Plan as submitted. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Construction Contract.
Okay. This item's coming before the board to hopefully give notice of intent to award a contract for the general contractor for the ordinance pipeline project. Request for Proposals was issued. Two proposals were received from Ratchee and Tappany. And the consultants did a technical review of the proposals and are recommending that the contract be awarded to Tappany. And the amount is for six million seven hundred and eighteen dollars, two hundred and two dollars.
Mr. Chair, I move approval, a notice of intent to award contract for general contract for the ordinance pipeline project to Tappany, in the amount of six million seven hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and two dollars.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Where's Tappany located?
Can you?
Did it get you out of their Tri-Cities office?
I think they do have a, an office in Tri-Cities.
Yeah, Vancouver, Tri-Cities.
Uh, Ratchee is from Vancouver.
Oh, wow, okay.
But I think Tappany was originally.
Yeah, I think they're, but they are, they do have a local presence.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Tank and Air Compressor Purchase.
This is also for the ordinance project. This is for the tank and air compressor that we located near the pump intake down by the Columbia River. The invitation to bid was issued and one was received timely from Hydro Air Systems for $550,654. And the consultant reviewed the bid and found it was compliant and responsive, and so they're recommending that be awarded. There was another bid received, but it was received about four hours too late.
It's called a deadline for a reason. Mr. Chair, I move approval of notice of intent to award contract for the purchase of tank and air compressor to Hydro Air Systems in the amount of $555,654.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is the National, is the ambulance staffing variance.
Okay, this is coming before the board again. You previously have approved this waiver in the past. It started in 2013 with the EC Matilla County Ambulance Service Area Health District, which is now the EC Matilla County, EC Matilla Health District, and they're requesting an additional waiver to the requirements by the state of Oregon to allow for non-EMT drivers. Due to the lack of, due to their staffing limitations, this waiver has been requested in the past, and they're also requesting it to have it renewed again. Their physician advisor has also concurred with the request and approved it. So it's before the board now for approval.
Quick question. That doesn't have to go back to the ASA board after we approve, right?
No, the ASA board has not been involved in the past.
Mr. Chair, approve.
There's been a motion and an approve, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the budget, or on the agenda is supplemental budgets. Oh, thank you, John. At this time, I'd like to go into a public hearing.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. This morning, there are eight supplemental budgets before you for consideration. I will summarize them for you. Budget Order 2023-99, Sheriff Office Special Programs. The Emergency Management Grants Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in beginning cash of $5,000, an increase in local revenue of $10,000, an increase in materials and services of $65,000, and a decrease in capital outlay of $60,000. Budget Order 2023-101, Community Corrections. The Justice Reinvestment Grant Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $2,265, an increase in local revenue of $2,500, an increase in state revenue of $46,156, and an increase in materials and services of $47,656, and an increase in contingency of $3,265. Budget Order 2023-102, Community Corrections Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $25,426, an increase in local revenue of $40,200, a decrease in state revenue of $5,000, an increase in materials and services of $23,200, and an increase in contingency of $37,426. Budget Order 2023-106, Facilities Improvement Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $2,600,000, an increase in capital outlay of $600,000, and an increase in contingency of $2 million. Budget Order 2023-108, Special Services Court Security Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $50,000 and an increase in personnel services of $50,000. Budget Order 2023-109, Community Benefit Program. The Local Improvement Distribution Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $5 million, an increase in transfers out of $1 million, and an increase in contingency of $4 million. Appears that rather than eight, there are only six that are for consideration. Those, those are ones for consideration today.
Thanks, Robert. At this time, I'll call for any public comments first. Those in favor, hearing none. Those opposed, hearing none. Neutral, hearing none. Thank you. At this time, we'll leave public hearing and rejoin our Board of Commissioners.
I'm going to defer to my colleague's motions.
Okay, I move to accept Budget Order 2023-99.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve Budget Order 2023-101.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve Budget Order 2023-102.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve Budget Order 2023-106.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve Budget Order 2023-108.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve Budget Order 2023-109.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the, on the agenda is Budget Transfers.
Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. There are four budget transfers ready to consider today. Budget Order 2023-100, Public Works, requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $1,950,000 and a decrease in contingency of $1,950,000. Budget Order 2023-103, Corrections Assessment, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in local revenue of $60,000 and an increase in state revenue of $60,000. Budget Order 2023-104, Records Archiving Program, requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the, at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $15,000, an increase in capital outlay of $25,000, and a decrease in contingency of $40,000. And Budget Order 2023-105, Fleet Management, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $50,000 and a decrease in contingency of $50,000.
Robert.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of Budget Order 2023-100.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move adoption of Budget Order 2023-103.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move adoption of Budget Order 2023-104.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. I move adoption of Budget Order 2023-105.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
That concludes today's Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everybody out there for attending.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.